So that being the case, I'd like to call to order this annual meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. And given that it's the annual meeting when we have some elections and other housekeeping to do, I would like to turn over the chairmanship of the, to Tim Bartlett, our board secretary and executive director to conduct this swearing in of our newly elected commissioners and begin the elections of officers for the year.
Great, Michael. Thank you. As Secretary of the Board, I'll take care of the swearing in and the election process for the President. Then I'll turn it back over to the newly elected President to continue the rest of the elections. So starting out, we'll go in order of seniority, starting with Meredith Blumenthal. Meredith, are you ready for the oath of office?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe you have your annotated notes, so you could follow along in case if I go too fast. And if you'll repeat after me, I, Meredith Blumenthal.
I, Meredith Blumenthal.
Having been elected to the Office of Commissioner of the Urbana Park District.
Having been elected to the Office of Commissioner of Urbana Park District.
In the county of Champaign, in the state of Illinois.
In the county of Champaign, in the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Thank you. You're now officially sworn in and serving a six-year term. Sounds like a sentence, but it's not.
Well, there's a lot of chains with being bound to the Constitution, so maybe it is.
All right, next Cedric, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go through your oath script. And repeat after me, if you will. I Cedric Stratton.
I Cedric Stratton.
Having been elected to the Office of Commissioner of the Urbana Park District.
Having been elected to the Office of Commissioner of the Urbana Park District.
In the county of Champaign.
In the county of Champaign.
In the state of Illinois.
In the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Commissioner to the best of my ability.
You're duly sworn in and official commissioner. Thank you very much. We have a full slated board and very pleased and congratulations to both of you. Next up, as Michael indicated, would be the election of officers, starting with the President. The Board will elect a President and a Vice President, and right now we'll take nominations and have discussion for the President position. Are there any nominations?
Yep, I nominate Michael Walker for President of the Board of Commissioners.
Do we need a second?
Absolutely.
A second.
Okay, we've had a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to the vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Oh, don't we have to go around?
What do we have to go in order?
Sorry, yes, we do.
Because it's
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for catching that. So used to be an in-person when we do this. Uh, let's see, starting out, Del Coleman. Uh, Blumenthal.
Aye.
Diggs.
Aye.
And Stratton.
Aye.
All right, I think we have four ayes. Michael, I don't believe you vote for yourself.
I, well, i-if you're asking me, I'm abstaining. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. I thought that was your typical approach, so I just assumed that. So we have four ayes. Michael Walker is our duly elected President of the Board of Commissioners. I'll turn the meeting back over to Michael.
Okay, well, well, thank you all and welcome back for another six years, Meredith, and congratulations Cedric. We're absolutely delighted to have you joining the board tonight.
Thank you.
And that brings us then to the election of a Vice President for the coming year. Are there any nominations of Commissioners to serve as Vice President?
Nominate Nancy Del Coleman.
I can second that.
Are there any other nominations for the Vice President? Hearing none, is is there any discussion? I'm not sure there's anything to discuss if there's only one candidate at this point. So let's hold this as a roll call vote in reverse seniority order. So we'll start with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
I'll follow your lead in abstain.
Okay, and I will vote in the affirmative as well, so that carries four to zero. And congratulations Nancy for another, another year as Vice President. So we now have the appointments to make. We need to appoint Secretary, Assistant Secretary, Treasurer, Attorney, Recorder, and Auditor for the year. And we do have a recommended slate of people here. Do we have a motion to approve the slate of Board Secretary Tim Bartlett, Assistant Secretary Allison Jones, Board Treasurer Richard Percival, our Attorney Matt Dearing, Board Recorder Allison Jones, or Designee of the Superintendent of Business Services, and the Auditor Martin Hood LLC.
Oh, move.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Seeing no indication of that, let's hold again a roll call vote as required in this remote attendance, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so we have made those appointments. We also need to appoint a Commissioner to serve as our representative on the Urbana Parks Foundation. And Roger has been serving in that role. Are you interested in continuing to do that, Roger?
I, I, I am.
I, I move to appoint Commissioner Diggs, the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, and we'll do again a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
And Roger, you can abstain. Okay, Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so that carries four to zero. And then we also need to appoint one or more Commissioners as UPDAC representatives. And Nancy has been serving in that role. And LaShonda was also serving in that role as sort of co-representatives, if you will. You willing to do that again this year, Nancy?
I am, but I would be happy if someone wanted to, well, I mean, I what am I trying to say? Anybody can, I mean, any of the Commissioners can always come to the meeting. So it's not, you know, it's, I'm just sort of the official one, but anyone, anyone could come in. In the old days, the majority, I think, of the Commissioners actually did come to the, to the meetings.
And I haven't discussed this with him, but given that Cedric is fresh off of UPDAC, I was wondering if he might be willing to serve as as a second Commissioner as an interface to UPDAC.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay. So do we have a motion to appoint those two as our Commissioners associated with UPDAC?
I move to appoint Commissioners Nancy Del Coleman and Cedric Stratton as UPDAC representatives.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Let's hold a roll call, although this is going to get, we still have, we still have three votes. Cedric.
I'll abstain.
And Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy, I assume abstaining, and I will vote aye, so this carries three to zero. And thank you both for being willing to do that. And lastly, we need to appoint a representative for the Urbana Tiff Joint Review Board, which is usually a once a year duty, and Tim and I have been doing that for the past several years. I certainly am willing to continue in that role.
Well, I move to appoint Commissioner Michael Walker and Executive Director Tim Bartlett to the Urbana Tiff Joint Review Board.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Holding a roll call vote, starting again with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I guess I'll vote in the affirmative since I think Tim, Tim does well in that. So we have made then all the appointments that are needed in the annual meeting. So we've run through the entirety of the agenda for the annual meeting. And I will therefore declare that meeting adjourned. And we can move on to open our regular board meeting for the month of May. And again, I would note, due to the COVID circumstances and the state emergency situation, that we are allowed all to attend remotely to this meeting as well. And the first item of business is either to accept or amend the agenda, and there is a suggested amendment to the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
One comment, I just, in the annotated note, it references moving new business item A, and B, we only need item A moved up this evening. It's in the first line under accept agenda.
I move to adjust the order of the agenda to move new business item A to immediately after public comment.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment for, or further discussion? Hearing none, again, we, in this remote circumstances, have to do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote affirmatively as well. That carries five to zero. So we then move to public comment. And is there anyone with us tonight wishing to make a public comment?
None reporting at Planning and Operations.
I'm going to turn the camera off of that video since the sun's shining in, if that's okay.
Okay, so a glaring absence of comment from oh, well.
All the better, you know, if we were doing bad things, they'd be there with their pitchforks, so.
Yeah. Okay, so apparently there's no one here to, to address the board this evening, and so we can move on to the new staff introductions, which is always a pleasant thing.
Sorry, we have two this evening. Savannah Donahoe is here and Janet Sosby.
I hope it's not Savannah.
Sorry.
Sorry. I just wanted to interject real quickly. This is also a official announcement of Savannah Donovan as our new Environmental Program Manager. We all know that, well, we may all know that Judy is set to retire June 24th. And as of the start of this fiscal year, Savannah Donovan is now managing that department. So we've got some transition things going on, but I, I just wanted to formally recognize her to the board as our new Environmental Program Manager. She's done a she's been with us for quite a few years. She's done some leadership roles when Judy had some absences for, for health issues, but she's done a fantastic job. I'm really excited for her to start her new role and just want to introduce her as the Environmental Program Manager, and I'll let her introduce her new staff.
Thanks so much, Corky. It's a real pleasure to be moving up at the Urbana Park District. I can't tell you how much I have appreciated my time here and how much I'm looking forward to what's to come, so thank you. I'm here tonight to introduce David Subers. He is our new Environmental Public Program Coordinator at the Anita Purves Nature Center. David actually started working for us part-time at the Nature Center in September of 2020. He helped to update our exhibits to be COVID safe. He's been leading guided tours of the field station, and he has worked as an animal caretaker and receptionist at the Nature Center as well. David studied natural resources, recreation, and tourism at the University of Georgia, and he has a bachelor's in forest resources. David moved here from Arizona, where he was working as the Outreach Coordinator at the Arizona Center for Nature Conservation in Phoenix. Oh.
Thank you so much, Savannah. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all well tonight. I really appreciate the introduction, and I'm really happy to be moving into this role with the Urbana Park District. I have what I think is a pretty solid background in environmental education. I've been able to learn from a lot of mentors, both at the Arizona Center for Nature Conservation and other nature centers, and I'm ever since starting to work part-time at Anita Purves, learned that I have some pretty great mentors here as well. So I'm excited to, you know, continue learning from people in the field who really have a lot of knowledge and experience and are just fantastic educators. So, so I know that I've got a lot of support from Savannah, even though I have some big shoes to fill, and I'm really very happy to be in this new role and excited for the upcoming camp season this summer.
And he's done an awesome job so far. I'm really impressed with David's ability to quick, pick, pick things up quickly, and he's really great with the public and kids, too, so.
Oh, one, one other thing I'll add, just personally, I live here with my, my wife and dog, so my wife is at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, doing a PhD program, so just a little bit of personal info, I live here in Urbana and really love the neighborhood. So even though I'm new to Illinois, I'm learning a lot through some professional development that I'm doing and through mentors here, so. That's all.
We're glad you're here. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome, David.
Thank you.
I would just say, welcome aboard, David, and not only do you have a great educational and experience background, you got a fantastic personality. We're really excited to have you onboard.
Thanks so much. I, I'm excited as well.
Janet?
All right, my turn. Hi, everybody. I am here to introduce Matt Lewis. Some of you probably remember him when he did his internship with us back in 2019. He is our new Community Program Coordinator, and he just started on April 19th. And we have figured out that he's the first Community Program Coordinator that has started right before camp. The last three before him all started in October, so they had a few months before the insanity begins. But I am super excited to have Matt here. The last year or so, he has worked for just about every recreation supervisor he could, and he's done some invaluable work for us, and we're excited to see what he does for community programs. And I will let you, Matt, tell a little bit about yourself.
Thanks for the intro. Yeah, so my name's Matt Lewis, and I've been kind of doing multiple different kind of community programs for about a decade now, worked across multiple different other park districts, kind of got or in between that, got to learn a little bit about every other park district and how they kind of run, and had to adjust kind of like, or just the differences and different type of programs they offer, just based off of location and everything, so. It's really appreciative of that. Then my internships here at the Urbana Park District, starting January 2019. Like Janet said, kind of worked in a little bit of every department, got to work under all of the supervisors, kind of got to get a feel for every type of department and what kind of each department had to offer. You know, and because, you know, the former Community Program Coordinator, Nikki, I know she, she did a lot with the Urbana Park District, so I know there's a there's some big shoes to fill there, but I am looking forward to the future. Very excited. This is, you know, the insanity that is summer, but, you know, prepared to take on the challenge, so, yeah, looking forward to working with everyone.
It's insanity with a mask. Not even just straight insanity, it's insanity with a mask. Well, we're glad you're here. Welcome. I guess we can say welcome back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He barely, he barely left.
You know, a good thing when he saw it.
Well, he's joined that group of people who were very successful interns that have gone on to be full-time workers, and that's something we're really proud of at Urbana, that so many of our great staffers got their starts as interns.
Yep.
That, so it does say good things about how you guys treat people when they come in to learn.
Yeah, and their initial choices are obviously good, strong candidates right from the start.
Yeah, so I would say for Matt, he has got the experience completely across all of recreation.
And he's still here.
And he's still here, and he is, I'm very excited to see him take his new role. Matt is going to do a fantastic job for us as well. Just a little kudos to Nikki. Nikki has joined Carbondale Park District as a Superintendent of Recreation, so
Oh, wow.
Does a lot for Janet, how she manages, and, and you know, the Urbana Park District as a whole, so. Matt, Matt may be the next Superintendent somewhere, hopefully for a lo-long time down the road for our sake, so that we keep him around, but good job on the leadership in, in the different departments. You guys have all done a great job.
Yeah, Nikki did, Nikki did a really fantastic job, and she had an extraordinarily fertile brain for doing things. So it's, you know, it's good for Carbondale for recognizing somebody really good.
Yep. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Indeed, welcome, Matt. And so I believe that takes us then to the new business that we brought up to the front of the agenda, so discuss our ADA accessibility consulting services.
Kara Dudik's going to introduce that topic. Kara?
Thanks, Tim and Michael. So Jennifer Skolsky is with us, and she is who we're going to be entering into a contract with. In my memo, I talked about how it's been a little over 10 years since we did our last ADA assessment. And of those deficiencies, we've addressed around 47%, which is over 350 deficiencies, which is a big deal. But I also want to acknowledge that everything we do with the inclusion strategy and our strategic plan and the You Belong Here initiative, that we're always setting the bar higher and trying to do better. And with that, I'm really excited for what Jennifer has to offer, both in terms of how she assesses things and gives us a workable product. So some of these things can be very confusing, and you're not really sure, you know, how to actually address it or what maybe the issue is. But I'm really excited about how her, her interface works, and also just some of the trainings that she's going to offer to us. And I'm also just kind of excited to hopefully follow her around while she does some of these things and learn a lot myself to transfer into our work. And so with that, I just wanted to open it up for Jennifer to mention anything that she would like, or for Commissioners to ask her any questions also.
Thanks, Kara. Hello, everybody. You might notice I have a funny accent because I'm from Rockford, Illinois. So I don't know if that gives a laugh or not, but anyway, so, but I'm due east from you over in the northeast side of Indianapolis. I have dedicated pretty much almost 30 years of my career to inclusion in parks, recreation, and tourism, and my first job right out of college was with the Rockford Park District. And so I was responsible for implementing their ADA transition plan and their self-evaluation. So, you know, we've had conversations with staff. I kind of looked through my notes, and I think there's an email that goes all the way back with Tim to 2018, you know, so it's been something that we, we've kind of talked about here and there. Kara is really great. It's sending me really tough emails with tough questions, and so we've had a couple discussions and Zoom meetings about universal design and how we can take some new projects above and beyond to the minimum standards, to more a universal design to meet the needs of, of people with all different kinds of abilities and disabilities. So we're excited about this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm a little bit interested, being a bit of a computer nerd, that one of the things you're proposing, providing, I believe, is, is an access database with templates of the information in it. So it seems like we were running through an Excel spreadsheet. Do we have staff training sufficient to, to run an access database, or is that going to be something additional that we're going to have to achieve?
So there's a lot of different software programs that are out there now, and when I say a lot, I really only mean like two or three, but they require an annual licensing and maintenance agreement that can get really out of hand when it comes to actually implementing your accessibility improvements. So I'm one of the few people in the United States that has actually worked with all of the federal land management agencies on their individual systems for tracking accessibility improvements. So I've kind of taken a little bit of the best of all those widgets and worked that together into a product or a software that you already have. So it'll be easier for you to manage the data, and we always say good data in, good data out, so you'll be able to manage, track, schedule your accessibility improvements, link that up with other systems that you might be using, like your GIS, if you want to map accessibility deficiencies or improvements, track work orders and so forth. So we, I just offer that in a way that is easier for staff to take with them and implement with them in the office as opposed to having to subscribe to a software.
Which is certainly a positive thing, and if I understand correctly, you are providing that as a work product, the, the design of that database, we have a, an unlimited license to use it for our own businesses. Is that correct?
Yes, internally, you'll totally be able to use amongst all staff. You wouldn't have to subscribe to any licensing other than the Microsoft Access License.
If there are no further questions, staff recommends that the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners award the Accessibility Consulting Services for $52,500 and also contingency for $7,875 to Skolsky Consulting of Fishers, Indiana.
Okay, kind of small on my phone here. Then I'll make the motion that we award the Accessibility Consulting Services for $52,500 and a contingency in the amount of $7,875 to Skolsky, sorry, Skolsky Consulting LLC of Fishers, Indiana. Second. Well, I did the hard part. Somebody has to second it.
I did.
I did second it.
Oh, sorry, Roger.
That, yes, that we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion or questions on that point?
My club is just gonna add, we had a terrific interview discussion with Jennifer. One of the things I think all of our staff noted was we really aligned with our philosophies of, you know, the services and, uh, facilities that we offer. And some of the design and access, um, issues that surround that. So we really appreciate, uh, Jennifer's interest in this project.
So this is Tim looking forward and to, so she's gonna, Jennifer will be helping us with things as we're going along with the health. And, and wellness center as, as a, in addition to.
Correct.
Existing, existing difficulties. Right?
It's working now. Yes.
Yep.
Nancy, I would add that we're, we're actually going to be touring a facility, a health and wellness facility on Friday, uh, in North.
Oh, right.
That Jennifer helped out with, uh, she.
Oh, great.
She works with them. And when we asked about her services, they, they, they said that, that she is just a, um, tremendously valuable and, and reviewing their plans. And making sure they, they don't, uh, you know, stumble, um, also catching things before, before they get costly to redo. So, um, I think, uh, you know, we've already seen that experience in working with Jennifer on, on Blair Park Plan Review. And a few things at Crystal Lake as we are looking at them more closely. So we're, we're, we're really excited to be working with Jennifer and you're going to visit one of the facilities she's already touched.
Great.
I just wanted to say, I didn't want Jennifer to take, uh, the silence of the rest of the board as disinterest. It's just a very impressive presentation, Jennifer. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I think we need to do a roll call vote, uh, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
And Roger?
Aye.
Is Meredith has departed for a while?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. So that passes unanimously with the, uh. Four commissioners who are presently, uh, in attendance at the meeting. And, uh, just like to say, uh. I too think, uh, very impressive things that you have presented and that we have heard about you. And we're absolutely delighted that, uh, we are going to have such a high quality review of, of our, um. ADA and related kinds of things, particularly with this idea more to universal design. As opposed to, you gotta absolutely follow the regulations and nothing else. But it's good to think out of the box a little.
Thank you very much.
You, Jennifer.
Okay, that takes us to our UPDEC report.
Laura sent us an email around six. Did you see it, Tim?
Yes, Laura, Laura had to go for a COVID test, I believe. She said she.
Strap, strap.
Strap, sorry. I, I, some medical test. Um, she said she would try to return, um, as she could. Asked if staff could do their, uh, and provide any updates on, on the report. I think you've seen her written report. We certainly can answer any questions. Think we had a wonderful discussion on the health and wellness, um, update. Talked about the public phase coming up, answered a lot of questions that UPDEC had. So it was a really good meeting. Nancy might have something to add. Since she was present as well.
No, I think, I think that covers it nicely.
Great. Kelsey, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I mean, her report was great and, um, you know, it's that it, we've been having a, a series of, I think, really good meetings. So.
Yep. Okay, unless there are any questions, I think we're ready to move on then to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for this evening, our approval of the minutes of the April sixth study session. Approval of the minutes of the April thirteenth, regular board meeting. Acceptance of the reports from the three adminis- the three departments, administration, planning and operation and recreation. Action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. Approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. Action on resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero four to appoint UPD, uh, Freedom of Information Act officers. Action on resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero five to appoint UPD Open Meetings Act representatives. Action on resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero six to appoint a UPD, uh, ADA coordinator. And finally, action on the annual appointments and assignments. Well, I think that we just did that, but that's okay. It is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda. For a separate discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wanting to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? I see no indication of that. And then under our consent agenda rules, there is to be no further discussion once we have a motion on the floor. For approving this. Do we have that motion?
Um, I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. And as I'd gotten ahead of myself saying, under the rules, there is to be no further discussion at this point. We are ready to hold a roll call vote, uh, to, on the consent agenda, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Uh, Roger?
Aye.
Uh, Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. So that carries unanimously with four commissioners present. Um, that moves us on to the reports phase of our agenda.
I was muted. Hi, everyone. Um, can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Uh, well, thank you for all coming here tonight. I'm come to tell you a little bit about. The performance of the park district through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, which also happens to be the end of our fiscal year. So this is a good, uh, overall snapshot of how our performance is winding down. Of course. There will still be some expenditures that will continue to be booked. Um. Sorry, I have a message probably. Um, okay. Uh, that will be, can continue to be booked in May and even into June as bills still come in for those, for the periods that lead up to April thirtieth. But, uh, for the most part, this is a pretty good look at where things are. So the first report that I will show you tonight is called the Revenue and Expenditure Report. It is a report that shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior twelve-month period, the budget for the current year. And the performance, year-to-date performance of the twelve months ending April thirtieth. This first page of the report is what we call SOME ONE, and it is all of the funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for this period were eleven million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, which is an increase of four hundred and twenty-four thousand. Since the March report that you looked at last month. Seven point four million of total revenues or property taxes. And a large chunk of that increase in revenues, um, was related to recognizing the remaining partner shares. Of UIAC for the end of the fiscal year. So we didn't actually, you know, bring in the door four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. It was mostly recognizing, um, the partner shares, which half of which we will get from the school district. But our share comes from our own funds. The biggest difference between this year and last fiscal year has been our earned revenues, which is this two hundred and twenty-two thousand figure here. Compared to last fiscal year, the district earned just over a million dollars in fees, which is program revenues and rentals. Um, for that twelve-month period, which is about seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand more than at this same point in our year. We did bring in over fifty thousand dollars of revenue in April, though, um, since I last showed you this report. So I think that's just an uptick and some of it was in UIAC, um, and then other programs picking up, uh, speed for what we're able to do. So, um, it'll be interesting. We have a lot of revenue coming in for camps. So that'll all get recognized on these, on the May reports. So it'll be interesting to see where we're at, um, uh, next month when we look at these again. Expenditures are the bottom half of this report. Expenditures were ten million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is a change of five hundred and forty-nine thousand. Since March. We have a surplus after twelve months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid. Of one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. This is one million and eighty-five better than our performance at the end of last year. So we're adding over a million dollars to our fund balance, whereas last year we were adding just maybe like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So, um, we know that's due to COVID. We know, um, that we did a good job controlling expenses. That was our primary reason that we were able to survive, uh, the pandemic at this point. Second page of this report, we call SOME TWO, summary page two. And, uh, this is just the Capital Improvements Fund. This report shows revenues in the Capital Improvements Fund. Of one million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and expenditures paid of two million, two hundred and, or sorry. Two million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Expenditures exceed revenues and this leaves a net decrease in the Capital Improvements Fund. Of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And Cedric, I don't know if you heard me say this last month. I don't know if I said it last month, but I'll say it again tonight. And I'm happy to meet with you, um, at any point, if you'd like to talk more. But, um, the Capital Improvements Fund specifically, the whole entire point of this fund is we receive bond revenues. And the entire point is to spend every dollar on capital improvements. So this seven million in fund balance that we're showing at the end of this fiscal year, all of this is intended to be spent, um, in its entirety. And that's very different from our other operating revenues where we have fund balance policies where some of that, um, the ending fund balance. We actually want to reserve as like a rainy day fund or for unseen emergencies, et cetera. But our capital improvements fund is very different in that way that we've received this bond money and our goal is to get it all spent. So, um, we usually budget to spend most of it. We'd actually budgeted, um, to reduce our fund balance by seven million, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. You can see on this budget report. We didn't make it quite that far, but we have a lot of projects coming up, um, next year as we're entering in. As we're finishing up the Crystal Lake Rehab Project and as we're starting out on our, um, uh, Health and Wellness Facility Project. Which a lot of this bond money is going towards, a lot of what the seven, uh, this total seven million is going towards. So. Um, again, like happy to meet with any commissioner if they want to talk more about budgets. So feel free to reach out.
Well, I would like to say right now that it is so much easier to read this with your highlighting that it's just wonderful. Thank you for doing that. Or thank you again, because then we've talked about it, but it's, it's considerably easier to read this way. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's, it's not hard for me to do. It's just an overlay that I, um, copy and paste over from the prior month on, in a PDF. So sometimes I have to adjust where the lines are and stuff, but it doesn't take me long and I'm happy to do it because it helps me too. It's very hard. Because these lines don't come on this report. It makes it really hard to read. Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's great. Thanks again.
You're welcome. Um, this last, or this third page of the report, we call SOME THREE. And all it is, is the first two pages added together for an entire district-wide picture. Um, and what I like to point out on this page typically is that our ending fund balance for the entire district, if the district were to dissolve today. We have sixteen million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in fund balance. And following that are the individual main working funds. There's twenty-four funds in the district. But the main working funds are the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund and the indoor pool. So we always give a summary snapshot of each of those every month because those are where really the majority of the activities happening. And, um, that's all I had for the fund balance, uh, revenue and expenditure report. If, uh, anybody has any questions while I scroll down to the next one. Okay. I just didn't want to make you, y'all dizzy. Um, okay, so the next report is called the Treasures Report. And as you can see, I've got a big unaudited result subject to change here because we do still make a lot of changes to our financial statements. In the month of May especially, but even sometimes into June. So, um, these numbers will change. It's not just, it's not just that they may change. I already know they will, um, but usually not very drastically. So what you see is a pretty good picture. The Treasures Report is the amount of cash that the district has on one day, which is April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. All funds are listed with where the cash and what bank investments that the cash is, is, um, invested in. For a grand total at the end of April of fifteen million, six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Page two, the top section lists money that we have in interest-bearing accounts. Uh, we've talked about this before, but the economy with the downturn with coronavirus, our interest rates are just like really awful. I mean, this is like two thousand eight awful for interest rates. So it'll be interesting that, I mean, that took several years to recover from. And so it'll be interesting to see if the economy bounces back, you know, once things start opening back up or what. But so far, they've just been like really at the bottom of the barrel. So, um. Of the fifteen million, six hundred and eight thousand dollars that the district has on hand, fourteen million and seventy-four thousand. Is out in investments at some low rate. Um, we're legally obligated to keep our money in interest-bearing accounts. If it's not being actively utilized, you know, for operations, so for paying our bills and so forth. So, um, we have a high-yield savings account, um, at Chase. We have investments with, uh, yeah, high yield.
Yeah.
Um, we have a high-yield, oh, sorry, we have investments with Illinois Funds and with, and a couple of money market accounts with the park pool. So those are, um, funds where the interest rates aren't super high typically, but, um, the monies are a lot more liquid. And then in other cases where we know we don't need the funds for as long, we'll purchase CDs or something like that to try to get a little higher interest rate. Which we usually can. Right now, CDs aren't getting any better interest rates than cash. So, um, as our CDs have been maturing, I haven't been reinvesting them because I'm not getting any better rates. So I'm just continuing to evaluate that and try to make the best decisions that I can. So.
Katie, how do you make the decision about how much money to actually put into investments and how much money to kind of keep?
That's a really good question. I, I actually worked with, um, Iptalaf. Um, there's a lady named Michelle that works there. And she and I actually did a cash flow analysis where, um, she helped me analyze our floor. I think I brought the results of it to, um, the board. It was several years ago. It was when, it was either the year I started as business manager or maybe it was even the year when Dottie and I were working together. Um, but she helped me analyze the floor basically. There's, there's a certain amount of money, which is really basically our ending fund balance at the end of the year. Um, and it's this amount of money that we never dip into, right? So, um, and it's kind of that like mandatory fund balance amount that we want to always have on hand. And so that's the amount that we typically try to keep out, like in maybe less liquid investments. It's like in a CD or something where we couldn't access it. But yeah, I mean, cash flow planning is, is, is a tricky thing. So I mean, I.
It must be.
Especially with these larger capital projects. I mean, I get Andy on the phone a lot, like, wait, when are these bills getting paid? I gotta move the money around. Get it where it needs to be to pay the check, right? So, uh, we only have one checking account for vendor checks. So, but we have money in all of these different places.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So this is just a snapshot. This, there's, there's some variability in this on a.
Yeah, so this is just on this one day, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The day before, it could have been a little bit different. So.
Sure, sure. Okay, thanks.
Exactly, yeah. Um, there were no changes to inter-fund loans this period. And finally, on the vendor dispersments. Um, we have five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in vendor dispersment during the month of April, which is a very typical month. As we're gearing up for camps to get started. So there was really nothing unusual, other than maybe that, um, we did some additional capital improvements. At the Crystal Lake, out of the Crystal Lake Pool Renewal Fund, but this was all planned, um, things. So it wasn't actually, it's just the timing of when that check got written. So. Uh, with that, I present the Treasures Report to you for approval.
I'm openly accepted Treasures Report for audit.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Seeing no indication of that, uh, roll call votes, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. That carries unanimously.
Awesome. Well, um, I have one more report to share with you, uh, one more regular report. And that is the, um, capital budgets for, uh, the month of April. And any items where any activity occurred during the month are indicated with an asterisk symbol. And I'll walk you through the changes that have occurred since, um, we last met. So in this first budget report is the. So in this first budget report is the series twenty nineteen A bonds, and this was the large, just more for Cedric's. Knowledge or anybody that happens to be viewing this at home, but the the series nineteen A bonds was. The six million dollar bond issue that we we refunded, we refinanced our twenty ten and twenty eleven bonds. And we took out some additional capital for additional improvements. And we split that money between improvements at Crystal Lake Park and the Health and Wellness Facility. So you might. Have heard us say we have three, three million dollars allocated towards the Health and Wellness Facility. This is where that money is coming from. Was from this bond issue. So the only activity that occurred during the month of April was a small amount of spending towards the Crystal Lake One Way Road Project. Next month, when I bring this back to you, there'll be a column for FY twenty two, the next fiscal year. But there's still may be some activity being posted to the prior fiscal year as well. So there may be asterisks in both columns. So. I'll be sure to point that out next month if that happens. In the twenty twenty one capital budget, this is our regular rolling capital budgets that we have one every year. The revenues, revenues work see receive for tributes. And we received a very generous donation from the Ambucks Club for a new dugout shade at the ball fields. To purchase that shade. And then we also received another very generous donation from a donor that went to the Urbana Parks Foundation. Which we requested from them in April and we were able to then turn around. Out of the expenditure line and purchase the sculpture two in the hand to be part of our permanent sculpture collection. The other expenditures that occurred in the twenty twenty one budget were for tributes and then. I actually forgot to remove this asterisk. Last month, we transferred a three thousand dollar donation. That was received by the park district over to the foundation. That actually happened in March. Oh, and I'm sorry, this also happened in April as well. We paid the park grant award fee. You gotta pay to get the grant.
You have to pay to apply for it. You have to pay when you get it.
Yes.
Right? You pay, yeah, in and out.
But hey, we're very thankful for a two point five million dollar grant. Well, we're gonna go for it. So.
Yeah, I think it's worth the effort.
In the twenty twenty capital budget, there was expenditures on tributes and construction crew projects. That was all. In the twenty nineteen capital budget, a small amount of additional donations were received from the foundation towards the Crystal Lake Rehab Project. So this total one thirty four is everything that's been accumulated all the way through the fiscal year, but. The asterisks may be just a very small amount of activity that contributed to that total. So that. That lump sum one thirty four isn't what actually happened in April. That's the total for the whole fiscal year. And then on the expenditure side, expenditures occurred on construction crew projects. The lake house retaining wall was paid for out of improvements to the lake house retaining wall were paid for out of this hardscapes and fencing line. And down in contingency improvements were made to the dog park. Access from the parking lot. Entrance area and those improvements were paid from contingency. And two more, the twenty eighteen capital budget expenditures occurred on tributes out of recreation, small equipment. And U I C's, sorry, Urbana Park District's share of capital improvements at the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center. We've. Got several capital improvements that are being paid for and we split those fifty fifty with the school district. So our fifty percent share gets coded to our capital budget and then we bill the school district for their share. And finally, in the twenty seventeen capital budget, again, we spent out this line of U I C capital improvements. To equal the forty thousand that we'd allocated out of this budget and then I moved up to the next one. So I I went in reverse order for explaining that. So we usually fill up the oldest. Capital budgets first and then move on to the newer ones. So with that, I believe Andy and Derek have some updates for you on capital projects.
I can start with the Crystal Lake Rehab Project and. Over the last month, the boat dock was once again delayed. For its delivery, but has finally begun to arrive at the park beginning this morning. The installation contractor is planning on moving the dock. From its current temporary storage location near the kayak launch. To the lake house deck and have installation completed by the end of this week is their plan. Some other outstanding work at the site included the revision of the plaza area off of Broadway Avenue for the improved ADA seating. And installation of VFD and the makeup water pump. Those were completed within the last month. Stark still needs to do a small modification on the outlet water pipe. Within that feature to make sure it's hidden under some outcropping stone. And won't attract anyone to the water as a play amenity. So it'll be more of a hidden flow, gentle flow of water rather than anyone seeing any sort of. Spout coming up. As far as the contract, we had our fourth change order on the construction and the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and seventy two dollars. And seventy seven cents, and that was for modifications to the handrail at the boat dock access ramp. And also for an extension of stormwater pipe off of Broadway Avenue into the lake. And that was as a result of some regrading work at that corner of Park and Broadway. So just to update the board on our approved contingency, we're right now just at a little over a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. Remaining in contingency on that contract.
You feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, they're entering a point now where it's really into vegetation maintenance and the finish up some planting. There shouldn't be anything. Shouldn't be anything too major that I would anticipate. Kind of moving on to other projects within Crystal Lake. Our one way road transition, we have a staff team that are currently looking to. Schedule a vehicular park road closure. Some point this summer, and that's really to open up the road for use only to bicycle and pedestrians for a day. And that's an effort to promote that one way road concept more to the public. We're working with Fairgram on marketing related items for that new concept and want to utilize that event day in the park to help. Promote future enhancement. At this time, we're not intending to include the one way transition as part of the road rehab project. We'll look to install the the street markings and signage. Once we get an ITAP connection along Broadway Avenue and that's completed, that application that we submitted. Last winter, we have not yet heard on the status of that grant. But that would connect the Park Broadway Corner from the last ITAP project to the North Broadway Trail. That currently begins on the north side of that Broadway Park entrance. And so once that's connected, that'll allow a safe. It'd be safe access for bicycles and pedestrians leaving the park road on Broadway. To move southward along that new trail, rather than forcing them to exit onto the street and then move. Over the bridge and on the road, which is not a. Safe, not a safe means of transportation that we want to direct our park users on to. So we intend to use that park road closure to set up a few public information stations. We'll have a station to include work planned for the park overall. And an opportunity to gather input on our master plan update for Crystal Lake Park. Which we've been working with Smith Group now for about a year on. And we don't have that scheduled. At this point, we're looking to do it probably on a Saturday at some point this summer. We're meeting with Fairgram later this week and might have a date hashed out here pretty soon. Moving to Blair, our Auslad project, the final plan set. Issued for construction was delivered to the contractor yesterday afternoon. So they will begin to soon stake out the site and set up their erosion control. We completed a number of public information items in the last month. We set up yard signs in the park. Posted a banner and delivered flyers to the neighbors. This morning I taped a mark in the park segment as well with Mark out at Blair. I think that's going to be the first mark in the park. Since the pandemic craziness has happened. I think he was hoping that would be on UP TV probably by the end of this month. Finally, last month at the board meeting, the board awarded the contract for our domestic hot water replacement at the indoor pool. We are still awaiting delivery dates on the equipment. For the contractor before we can officially set a week closure for the facility. If you remember, due to supply chain issues over the course of COVID, we had some uncertainty. On when materials would be available. And we didn't want to set a closure date until we had some sort of some more clarity on when those, when that equipment would actually arrive. At this time, it's looking like the anticipated lead times will fit with what our desired schedule would be, which is to have. A week long closure at the end of summer. Towards the end of July and early August. Once our engineer has the submittals approved. From the contractor, they will get the materials ordered and once they're ordered, we'll have the firm delivery dates. And at that time, we'd be able to set that closure period. So we're about. Two and a half months away from that goal. We wanted to have at least thirty days notice and it's. I think we're getting really close to being able to set that closure date here, probably by the end of this month for sure. So it should have plenty of notice for the the pool users and members as we move forward. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Yeah, I had a question. Are we going to be badly affected by the increase in pool chemical costs? Or is that not going to ding us much?
I don't think it's going to ding us much. Nancy, Joseph was working early and got a lot of material already ordered before the the current shortage on chlorine. Took place. So I think we're in good shape for for this year. It may affect us some with the indoor as we, as that, you know, calendar stretches out, but right now we're in good shape for the outdoor.
Good. Cause now we made some changes, right, to our. To our pool chemical.
Switched over from the acid system to the CO2 system. And. I haven't heard about a shortage on either of those. Mostly what I've heard is chlorine so far.
Yeah. Good. Cause that would be a big hit if that were, if we were still. Depending on that. Hooray for Joseph.
On the topic of aquatics, I'll also mention that a project that we're not managing, but we're sort of the recipient of. Just putting a new roof on the. It's been challenging. Yeah, we're finally getting a good stretch of weather. So they're making some progress. Early on, both the contractor. And the architect and in the school district all thought we wouldn't have much impact indoors. But on the second day, a six inch long screw sheared off and fell into the leisure pool. Fortunately, no one was in it at the time. And and a few metal shavings as well. So we have now closed the pool and we're monitoring their progress closely. They hope tomorrow they'll complete all the work that involves roof penetrations. It may stretch, it may stretch out as far as Thursday, but. They are making some good progress. Now they're getting some better weather. On the topic of better weather, the cool overnight temperatures has delayed progress on our tile project at the Outdoor Aquatic Center. And it looks like potentially Thursday. Certainly by Friday, we'll start to get into some overnight lows where they could get back and begin their work again. Joseph's worked with them to develop a pretty. Complicated approach to how we'll begin filling the pools. And preparation for for when they complete their work. It'll need a one week cure time before we can get them wet. So he's gonna. Partially fill pools in a staggered way. So we we lose as little time as possible getting our guards in the water. Weather's not been a friend to us this spring.
Well, I could tell you from being inside while they were working on the roof. And try, try and hold a class. It was like being in the belly of the beast. We're kind of looking up to hoping that nothing big was gonna drop in on us. It's, I mean, it's a huge undertaking. I think everybody's pretty understanding, but man. That's, it's been hard. The weather has not been good to us.
Any other? Comments on our questions on the capital budget report? Well, thank you all, and we can now move on to the executive director's report.
Thank you, Michael. Starting out with some of our, yeah, you belong here updates. As you know, the. Board packet had a lot of great information in the reports. Certainly staff can answer any questions about that, but we did have our May Coalition Executive Team Meeting. Last Wednesday and had kind of a somber meeting, some very kind of grave. Facts were presented, as you probably know from reading the paper. A lot of the shootings and the shots fired have really, really increased. The city of Champaign is up ninety two percent. From last year and the city of Urbana is up sixty two percent, which were already stratospheric numbers. As you know, I keep reporting on those as we go, and I think the concerning part, folks, is there aren't a whole lot of recommendations. I think our law enforcement, you know, we're relying on our teamwork, communications, the community coalition. You know, the all teams group that meets on the alternative Wednesday and kind of sharing all the efforts and the work going on at. You know, every agency and every not for profit in town, but. You know, the shootings continue. As you probably read the paper, there was a two year old shot in Scottswood neighborhood, right next door to Weaver Park. And I think, you know, a lot of the community groups, the ministerial alliance, you know, they're getting very concerned. And we don't have a lot of answers. Our Fresh Start Program, which is really part of an outreach to, you know. Offenders in hoping to mend their ways for the future, you know, it has marginal success. So we can't really count on that as a winning program. So the kind of discussion went, what are, what are the opportunities this summer as we go into that next kind of concerning period when, you know. At least in typical times when a lot of area youth are out of school. We don't have a lot of go to programs. Certainly, we are offering, you know, what we can offer at this point at the park district. They're more traditionally based programs. But we don't really have an area wide plan to, you know, do a lot of outreach. So we kind of spent a lot of time sharing, you know, updates and stories. I know Mayor Marland had reached out, Representative Ammons was inquiring about what Urbana could do. So we did put together some information, rec staff is promoting to us and we we all agree. A work program. So we had some information on our work program. We can take youth as young as fourteen. And I think our idea is if we could get people jobs, get them in, you know, a workplace, get them mentoring, getting some job skills, work history. Those would probably be the best things we could offer aside from a specially crafted program that could be funded. So I think some of the leadership was really very concerned. We didn't have a lot of go tos. We've done some follow up. I reached back out to. Tracy Parsons and indicated that we'd be willing to lead the, at least the Urbana group, working with City Park Schools. For next year to see what we could put together. Again, there are a lot of off the shelf programs that, you know, people are, have tried and are true. But there's probably some level of effort we can put together. Maybe there's some funding sources we can look at. But we're in a kind of precarious situation, folks, and we don't really have a lot of answers. So. We're open to any ideas. We'd work with anybody. I think Champagne's city staff is probably going to be working with the ministerial alliance group. Through that, the coalition can be involved. I think there's a few recommendations they'd like to pursue, but. You know, we're just still trying to work through that. Sort of on a up note, when this next report, talk a little about our meeting in Ivanhoe Estates. Thanks to Meredith, she got us connected with some researchers and folks working with. Immigration and refugees. I think the assumption when we met at the dog park site was. There was probably some interest in creating community gardens across the street from Ivanhoe Estates. When we got in discussion, Lucia Maldonado joined us. She actually let us know that. Large population of the Guatemalan residents that live in Ivanhoe Estates. Are actually already gardening on their small plots in the, where their mobile homes are and that they prefer that. They have more of a philosophy of. You know, caring for the plants. The plants know that, you know, they're close by and that. The idea of gardening a long way from home is kind of a foreign idea. So we spent the rest of our time talking about ways we could perhaps direct the grant that was being written to, you know, tools, equipment. Work with our Urbana Free Library on, you know, the seed library. I think watering was one of the big issues that came up. So I think there was some interest at least in looking at watering type systems, maybe small rain. I think watering was one of the big issues that came up. So I think there was some interest at least in looking at watering type systems, maybe small rain barrels, you know, that might be more applicable. That's not to say that we wouldn't consider, you know, community garden gardening at Perkins Road Site. But really, two other issues came up, two that we're aware of. Obviously, as we began to open that park according to our our plans. We need to be thinking about. Dual language for information. Obviously, if we want to encourage people to come over and learn about what's going on and some of the really neat nature things, we have to have an additional language. The other issue that was highlighted was really the kind of precarious street crossing at Perkins Road. The idea of us, I'm not saying the park district necessarily, but as people come over to the park as more as being offered. We really need to have some conversations, probably with the township, county, city, whoever could help work with us to get maybe some better signage. Look at a better crossing point. We want to take a look at maybe some MTD bus facilities in that area while there's a bus stop, you know. Maybe there could be some improvements. So we're very willing to continue working there. And again, thank you, Meredith. I think. The connection was both helpful and I think it will lead to ongoing discussion, which is what we want and need. So we're very open to that. Moving on, a couple of other items. Katie just alerted us. I think she found out today, the park district received the government Finance Officers Association's Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting. So we're very pleased. Thank Katie and all the accounting staff and all the supervisory staff that helped. Put all of the information as far as their bills and their coding and all of that goes back into that report. Ultimately, to show how what a great job the park district does with our financing. And again, it's been a hallmark of our financial department here at the park district. So we just say thank you. And very pleased about that. Let's see. Next, I wanted to talk a little about. Some of our work at the Prairie Weaver site. As you know, we've had a couple of conversations with the Smith Group re-engaging. With the Smith Group who did the original master plan at Weaver Park, kind of updated them on our new health and wellness facility, how it overlaps Prairie Park. And how we need to kind of look afresh at the at least the athletic opportunities in both of those park sites. As you know, we did the original master plan back in the early two thousands. It's I think served as well as a. Piece that we can talk about and point to the future. But now that we're really getting into it, we are going to be recommending, we'll be sharing a proposal with you shortly. To come back and look at some services that we need there. But I just wanted to pre-talk about that topic. Just to kind of highlight. You know, it's it's going to take some dollars to do the extensive work that we want to do there, including the master plan, district-wide review of all of our athletics. Where where they're currently at, what we're doing, where the market's growing, what kind of general improvements are needed. So you'll be seeing a report. Again, it's the first time we've ever done that kind of report. We did discuss at our last meeting, looked at ways we could help reduce some of the cost. Certainly, there's some work that staff could take on. We're willing to do that. But I would hope we would give this a fresh look when we bring it to the board. I think it's really needed and it's a lot has changed in the area-wide athletics. When we see what's going on at Ranthool, maybe some changes at the Champagne Park District. You know, what is our future for the next ten to fifteen years in athletics? And I want to be very clear, what we're suggesting is while there are travel team, kind of what I call the high-end level of competitive athletics for youth and adults in the area. There's still a need for that competition level in the what I'd call the park district area of opportunity. And that doesn't mean we have to have really poor chromey-type facilities, but we may not need the highest level of competition. So it's really important because I think we need to be thinking about our capital development at all these sports areas. They all probably need some level of upgrade and we need a master plan kind of approach to help guide us to get. Everything that we need upgraded, upgraded, things that maybe we're not going to move into different markets, but we want to really take a fresh look at that. So we'll be coming back to you with the report and hopefully we can move forward on that. And I should add to the physical master plan at Weaver Park. While many of the elements may be similar, we need to take a fresh look at that and. See that the changes that have come in that area of Urbana. Next item, my last item, just want to report on the Champagne County First effort. We had our legislative outreach last or April twenty-second, had a day-long. Outreach. We were able to talk with Senator Duckworth, Senator Durbin, Representative Davis. Department of Transportation, DCEO, and Representative Mary Miller on the federal side of things. On the state side, we were able to talk to Representative. Or Mike Marin, Scott Bennett. And we had a couple of other state offices that at last minute couldn't meet with us. DNR was one of them. And we hope to catch up with them. But we had a really, really good input. My two cents worth was promoting the KRT, both the development and the future extension. That will come into downtown Urbana. You know, I think that's the kind of project that if there were. Infrastructure dollars, those would be ideal projects because they cross large areas of land, affect a lot of communities and would serve a lot of people. And it was interesting to me when we talked with Senator Durbin, I gave a little background on our history. You know, we I say we collectively, all of us working with the rail trail project. But specifically, I had asked for an earmark back in two thousand nine and in two thousand twelve, which we received and Senator Durbin's. Comments were kind of interesting because he paused. He said, oh, the Kickoo Rail Trail. You're right. We were able to do earmarks back then and he kind of went on about how critical it is to have the earmarks. Obviously, it gives legislators an opportunity to touch their districts and do some really extraordinary things. And that's being discussed right now at the federal level. So I think it is a good example. Without that earmark, we would have never been able to do the early work to, you know, get that in a position to be acquired. So we'll hopefully with little fortune and maybe some resources at the state or federal level, we'll be able to see some realizations. One quick follow-up, there was some statewide legislation that's coming up. For high-speed rail, that was another topic we shared and Senator Bennett and Representative Ammons have both signed on to that legislative effort. At the statewide level. So it just shows. Obviously, I can't point to the April twenty-second date, but it does put things in line and they appreciate need to hear from our locals. So we had at least, I would say, maybe eight to ten really good projects that were presented and we'll see what what shakes out from that. I can answer any questions. Commissioners have anything on anything else?
Okay, hearing hearing no questions there. Move on to the president's report. In terms of upcoming meetings, we have an early study session in June. It's the first of June. And at this point, we're. Trying to schedule innovations in play design. We've got some. Playground changes that are going to be in the fairly near future, we hope. It's time to start thinking ahead about that. And also the Perkins Road Site update. So there's a lot in the works. At Perkins Road and some decisions to make for the coming months. And both of those will be covered then at June Study Session. And then on the eighth of June, we have. If there is any new property to add to the. So we do the annual annexations at that point because. We have to do them roughly by that date in order to make sure that they get included in our tax base for the coming year. And. Probably need to be talking about projects or charges for Uptech. And likely, there may be some bid approvals to do at that meeting as well. So. I don't have anything additional in that regard at this point. So I think unless there's specific questions. Move on to liaison reports. And. The finance study group did meet last Friday. There were some discussion of. Minor land acquisition, but I think the details coming out that the city is. Has some small parcels that they're trying to clean up their records on and are, I believe, prepared to. Sell those to the park district at a little price. They're not big chunks of property, but they they just want to clean up. Their inventory of that sort of thing. We talked quite a bit about the health and wellness facility. And funding sources. Possible strategies for some of those things. How to make the park grant match up with the DCEO. Monies that may be coming forward. So there's a there are a lot of financial decisions that are going to need to be made. And the staff's going to have some real challenges figuring out what dollars can be applied where. Once we have a little clearer picture, particularly of that second potential three million dollars. So that's gonna be some important stuff coming through there. There were discussions about Blair Park where. There is donor interest in dealing with the tennis courts and the related facilities there. So that's something the board should be aware of. Going forward that the there are likely to be some interested neighbors and former neighbors of that park. Interested in upgrading the the tennis components in Blair Park.
So they'll be interested but not unhappy? We're not you're not we're not assuming any unhappy neighbors. Am I right?
This was the circumstance. These are people, some of whom are on the foundation. And others who have been a long-term interest on the parts of some. For want of a better term, alumni of the high school tennis and the tennis programs in Blair and so on. Just making sure that 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 facility. Gets some upgrading and in theory, they're willing to do fundraising in order to help make that happen. So.
Right. So it's positive interest as opposed to opposition.
I believe that to be the case. Corrective.
Yes, that is correct.
The parts I heard sounded positive.
Okay. Well, you said neighbors would be interested in sometimes that's not always positive.
Sure. And and I was saying also, some of these were 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 past neighbors. I mean, people who in their youth were. Were very active. And that tennis facility and who may now not even be in Urbana anymore, but are are interested in. And some recognition of the people that they knew at the time.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. We talked about the the UPD lease arrangements and those things are on the agenda for later tonight. I don't think there's any point in covering that in any more detail. We talked about using the English Fund. For UIAC capital improvements and and I think it's important that the board as a whole know the nature of that discussion. Their question was, well. If we have forty thousand dollars that we need to to contribute towards a capital repair there. Can we just take that money out of the English Fund? And I think Roger and I. Have both taken the position that we think pulling money out of the principal of the English Fund. Or capital things should involve fairly sizable pieces of investment and we talked just in general about maybe a hundred thousand dollar threshold. For doing that, that we have that as kind of a security blanket, if you will. For either unknown or high-dollar kinds of changes that might come up in the future. Rather than for the sort of things that are down in the sights that we could more readily shoehorn in to the to the capital budget. So. Not sure we need to get to the point of setting a formal board policy, but I think the. If if there are any board members who think we ought to be doing that at a lower level, then we should go ahead and have a fuller discussion about it.
It seems reasonable to me.
We had some talk about the Perkins Road Site and I think there will be in the future, there's some question of delaying just how soon. There'll be opening that area up, doing part to. Some of the sanitary districts have got a essentially a brand-new board, if I understand correctly from Tim at this point. So their 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 decision-making process is probably put back. A few months at least in regards to that facility. So. And we had some additional discussion on women and minority on business in relation. And I I don't know that there's a lot to to say about that here other than that the district is working actively to move those. Kinds of procurements along and open up possibilities for dealing with that. And Steph invested a good bit of time in putting that together, plus, as you know, the. Hiring consultants. So. At any rate, I think it was actually a rather busy. Study group meeting that we covered a fair number of topics and I hope I give you at least a reasonable flavor of what was in there.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the principal balance in the English Fund? Katie, I that's true.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The original gift was around eight hundred thousand dollars and we spent a good chunk of it on the pool pack. So right now there's four hundred and seventy thousand that's at UC Wealth Management. And another hundred and twenty-five thousand that is in our operating account that we use as the operating cash for that indoor pool. That's just like a rolling cash. So that total of about six hundred thousand is what remains in as the principal of the fund. There was a long, long time. The original UIAC agreement required that the hundred percent of the interest earnings of the English Fund be transferred into the UIAC operating budget at the end of each year. With the new agreement that started five years ago, that we changed it to fifty percent. So fifty percent of the earnings stays in the English Fund to continue growing and fifty percent gets transferred out. Which has wound up being about seven thousand a year that it's been allowed to grow for the last five years. So I mean, it's gone up a little bit. So that's good.
It won't be going up much in the next year.
Right. Yeah, that was just my my question is what what what? What we had. Thank you for sharing what we're earning. I don't have any problems and I agree. I think it's better to support large larger projects with. With if we're gonna dip into principal. So.
Yeah, because we could eat it away really quickly and then some huge. Problem which pools are. Tend to lead toward anyway could come up and then we'd really be in the soup. So. Yeah, I think that's I think that's a good a good choice.
And which is a reminder that we also had some of a discussion about the outdoor facility and how well-balanced our. Renewal and and repair kind of funding is and whether at some point we're going to need to. Perhaps allocate more money to that function in order to keep up with things as the pool ages.
If I if you don't mind if I comment on that a little bit, Michael, that's kind of how the discussion about the English Fund started was. We knew there was a lot of needs at the outdoor pool and we were trying to find a way to. Maybe find money in our capital budget to help increase what was available and we allocate. Twenty to forty thousand a year. Sorry, forty. I think we do twenty thousand a year, but. There might have been one year we did forty, but I think we do twenty thousand a year out of our regular rolling capital budget. And so we thought, oh, if we could use the English Fund for that. Then we could have that those monies available for outdoor pool improvements as well. But I think the board's message to staff is clear and we will continue doing things the way we're doing them and bring. Discussion to the board with larger items. I know one larger item that's upcoming that we're thinking about is the slide tower replacement. So that'll probably be the first one that we really bring to the board for discussion about English Fund.
We'll have more discussion with that as we look at our next five-year agreement.
Any other questions on that finance study group? Okay. Seeing none. Uptech Policy Study Group.
Well, that's me. We haven't. Well, that's me. We haven't, uh, we haven't met, right? Policy?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's.
I think you met.
It was U P D.
Sure. So we, um, the policy study group met April thirteenth, um, to review chapters five and six of the board policy manual. And to discuss the qualifications-based selection policy, which is coming up for review tonight for approval. And I guess, um, are we going to assign new folks to these groups? Because right now it's just me.
Well, it, it would actually be useful to, uh, to have at least two people on each of these.
So I, I don't know what our process, I don't remember what our process. Yeah, we should have one. I don't, I don't have it memorized.
At this point, it's been a, a, a little informal. I, uh. Would ask if, if Cedric might be interested in, in joining that study group, partially as, as an educational thing. And, and start having some, some input on that. So that we'll have more than one person on it.
I wouldn't.
And then how, what is that? We also, I mean, Nancy, you, you and LaShonda also worked with the Up Deck. What do we call it? Up Deck?
I don't know.
Study group. Okay. Just to know there are options Cedric.
It's Up Deck Planning Study Group, and I think Cedric is now on it by default as the Up Deck representative that's been appointed. So he and Nancy are both on Up Deck Planning.
Yeah, we, we, we talked about that a little bit while you were dealing with your other thing.
Putting a three-year-old to bed, sorry.
Yes.
Michael, typically we've had, or at least invited to have two commissioners on each of the study groups. Obviously, if somebody's out or can't be there or just getting more good thinking on a topic. But certainly we're open to however the board would like to arrange.
It's not exactly an onerous service. I mean, it's not, it's not a monthly or even a bimonthly.
No, it's as needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to serve on both of those study groups.
Great.
Super.
And thank you. Were the, were there any further questions on the policy study group? Hearing none, and the Urbana Parks Foundation representative, who was reappointed tonight. I don't know if you were there for that, Meredith, so.
Yeah, we have, um, our, our May meeting was the joint meeting with the, uh, with, with this board. So we have not met since the last, last meeting I reported on.
And finally, the Up Deck, uh, Planning Study Group, so.
Right. And we'll be, we'll be, we'll be starting that up now that, now that we have our new board slate. We'll be starting that up soon. So, but there's, we have done nothing, I mean, nothing has needed to be done. Since the last month, so. And I think Kelsey's gonna kind of whip us into shape for that, right? Kelsey, am I right? Or somebody was.
I will be, sorry, I've got two keyboards here and I'm, takes me a second to go from one to the other. Um, yes, I'll be reaching out soon. Now that we have, um, our board, uh, representatives to Up Deck, we'll get the group together. I think we need to start, uh, discussing topics, uh, for the second half of the year. And we'll have an incoming, um, class as well. Uh, and then there, there's some other things that I, I'd like to bring up with, with the group, uh, too. Um, somehow up with Up Deck recruitment and appointments, it got very lopsided. So there's about ten people rolling off of Up Deck. Yeah, and so I, I think we maybe need to look at, um. You know, our, our strategy for sort of trying to build that back up in a, a more, um, equal way. Uh, year to year, so that in three years, we're not coming up on the same, um, issue of ten people suddenly rolling off. You know, just to keep Up Deck consistent with, uh, with membership, uh, levels. So, um, you know, we, we will maybe discuss that, um, uh, as well. And then we have, um, some, uh, applications rolling in and things. So yeah, we have definitely a lot we can, we can talk about. So I'm looking forward to getting the group together.
Okay, good. Well, you know, I have a pretty flexible schedule. So it's Cedric's schedule that we can, you know, that can really do, set the parameters for the meetings.
Yep, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, but is there any further questions there? Uh, ready to move on to old business? And, uh, there was nothing removed from the consent agenda under old business. And there was no other old business on the agenda tonight. So we can then move on to new business. Already have dealt with item A. So that brings us to item B, a discussion on resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero seven. Um, which was, it, it is intended to, uh, recognize Up Deck's fifty years of service. And I think, you know, we're just at this point looking to have a discussion on how we might, uh. Mark the, the milestone of fifty years of Up Deck and, and the great service that it's been for the district.
Michael, I wanted to at least open it up to give a little background. Kelsey probably has more to add as well. If you recall about, uh, probably a year before Ellen left, she and I had started the idea of planning for a fiftieth anniversary of Up Deck. And so I think we kicked around some ideas. We invited some former chairs to meet with us. Um, got some more ideas and they continued to meet as Kelsey moved into that role of overseeing Up Deck. She has continued to work with them. Um, I think the goal for tonight was to at least provide an example. Or perhaps a sample of some type of resolution won, so we didn't miss the milestone. Certainly the board could approve that resolution, but we understood and, um, would recognize there may be a kind of a different approach. Or maybe some different words or, or a series of events or activities that might want to be involved with that. So we wanted to simply just introduce it, have any discussion and take any direction that the board might have. Turn it over to Kelsey for anything she could add with her updated meetings.
Yeah, so, um, basically when I came on, um, we, we tried to get the, the Up Deck, uh, fiftieth anniversary planning group together. Which is been a pretty small group. It's, it's been pretty much me, Roger, um, and then Mary Ann Downey and Tyler Fitch. Um, so we've had, I think, three meetings since, um, I, I, uh, kind of took over liaising with Up Deck. And, um, you know, one of the things in the discussion was, um, you know, wanting to have some sort of formal. Board recognition at a meeting, um, of, uh, you know, Up Deck's fiftieth anniversary. And the, the contributions they've made to the district. And, and the idea that came up was the idea of just doing a resolution. Um, and so, you know, that's what's, what's drafted today. Um, and, uh, yeah, obviously like Tim mentioned, you know, we're open to other suggestions or changes. Or, you know, I think we were just sort of trying to, trying to fit something in into kind of these mechanisms we have in place. Um, for sort of, sort of, you know, formal board, um, pronouncements, I guess. Um, uh, but additionally, obviously this isn't really the end of recognizing Up Deck service. There is an event that we are planning for, um, just prior to the August Up Deck meeting, actually. We're planning on inviting current and former Up Deck, um, out to Crystal Lake Park. Uh, and we thought that'd be a great opportunity for sort of, um, you know, the new class and the former classes to, uh. To meet and then get to enjoy some of the improvements that have gone on in the park. Um, and then, uh, through our meetings as well, as part of a, a sort of board resolution. The idea came about of sort of wanting to dedicate, you know, some sort of space or something. Um, to, to recognize, uh, Up Deck's contributions. And talking with, with Tim and Derek, um, it seemed like the North Woods and, and Crystal Lake Park might be a good, uh. Uh, you know, good opportunity for something like that, um, especially, you know, kind of coming up on completion of this. Um, sort of big, big district project and, um, you know, uh, sort of that being. Uh, a way to honor the, the many contributions of, of Up Deck over the last fifty years. Um, but yeah, again, you know, we're open to some board suggestions and, and maybe, um. You know, changing language or, or doing something different entirely, you know, if, if a resolution isn't, uh, isn't the way the board would like to go. But that's just sort of a summary of kind of the, the process that led us here.
So North Woods Pavilion, you mean the old one down?
No, 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 the North Woods as an area of the park in its entirety.
Which is where?
It's, uh.
Out to the pool.
Yeah, south of the pool. So it's in the, it's the area where the North Woods Pavilion is. Um, but the idea was that we would place, um, you know, sort of like, uh, commissioners group. We'd place like a boulder and a plaque, um, you know, with some language on it as well that, that says that, um. You know, the space is, is dedicated in honor of Up Deck, but again, open to suggestions and discussion, so.
I was thinking about the new pavilion that we're going to build up above by the nature center, that, that it. Be primarily because I think that will put Up Deck, if we call it the Up Deck Pavilion, people will see. I'll be giving you at the Up Deck Pavilion. We're going to have this at the Up Deck Pavilion. And then Up Deck becomes an even bigger part of the citizens' awareness.
Mm-hmm.
Um, by doing that. And I don't think there, I mean, it's, that wasn't a donor-driven, uh, building. It was just a grant money, right? So, yeah, that's, that was my, that was my thought. That was my first thought when I read this.
I, I don't think that's, I think that's actually a great idea. I think we were sort of feeling pressure. Um, to, to try to really coincide with the actual, you know, fiftieth anniversary. And COVID sort of blew a hole in everything right in the middle when we weren't sure if we could get together. And so the whole process got really thrown and we're, and we're just kind of now, I think, starting to get back on track. So, um. But no, I, I mean, I personally think that's great and it had crossed my mind and I sort of. Dismissed it, um, just i- i- in the sense of wanting to get, you know, something done, maybe more in the near term. Because that pavilion's not going to be built, you know, for, for some time yet. So, um.
What's the timeline in that pavilion?
We, we, we requested proposal from Rashi. We just that we would edit this winter. Construction would begin in the spring. Want to review that schedule with Rashi once we get the proposal.
Mm-hmm. But it's not, it's not, it's not much longer term than that. I mean, it's, it's within that general window.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
What do you think, Meredith?
I think a resolution is like, not enough.
Well, it was never going to be only a resolution. I want to make that clear.
Right, no, and I, I, I appreciate that and I'm happy to, uh, support that. But I absolutely agree with you, Nancy, you know. It reminds me that when I, this reminds me of the conversation that we had last week with the foundation. And also, you know, when I was collecting signatures and somebody who'd been an Up Deck member, um, in my neighborhood was like, oh yeah, sure, I'll sign. And, you know, and they were telling their neighbor, Urbana Park District, they actually follow the recommendations. So.
Novel approach, we have.
Right. And so I think, I like, I really like this idea of something higher profile, um, that, you know, where people. And I, I feel like there needs to be some type of dedicated, like, education, like, as part of the pavilion, right? We oft, I often see like that we put informational pieces, but also something talking about what Up Deck is. And I don't know, a history piece so that people know, um, about it. Because I, you know, and in terms of doing things now, I mean, maybe there's ways to seed informa, like. To seed info to the news gazette, maybe, maybe somebody does need to.
Well, and, and I think honestly, if, if the board, uh, sort of gives direction on, on what they'd like to see. You know, we can be, you know, we have the ability to kind of get that information out and, you know, the whole thing. Uh, could, could culminate, you know, with, with an official board announcement. And then also, you know, that's information that we could share as part of the Up Deck celebration that we're planning to have in August as well. With cor, former and current Up Deck, um, you know, because part of what we're planning and Cara and Kayla are working on this. But they're, um, working on a, uh, G I S tour, similar to the arts and sculpture tour of the new amenities in Crystal Lake Park. So we wanted to be able to do, um, like a, kind of like a guided park tour. And, you know, for example, if we come up on where the, um, outdoor learning pavilion is going to go. You know, that would be a time where maybe we could say, you know, this, when, when this is built. You know, this is what it's going to be. Um, so I think that's certainly something we could incorporate. You know, fairly easily into, into whatever, um. You know, in, into the August event and then possibly with, you know, announcements and things like that before as well.
I actually don't think that Up Deck members are going to be particularly tied to, to a date, to a, you know. So if we're, if we're a year past the fiftieth birthday, well.
Well, and a lot of things are running late, so.
Everything, everything screwed up. So why not one more, one more thing? And I, I would, I would rather do something that I felt what had more impact and was more appropriate than just doing something to do something. So we got it. I mean, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, be thinking of, I don't know what, um, you know, something. Um, but I would like it to be more visible to the community. Because there's certainly nothing wrong with the dedication of that Northwoods area. I think that's not a bad idea, but I think that, that, that's not such a highly used part of the park.
Right.
That it wouldn't, it wouldn't, um, get the number of eyeballs on it that I would really like to have on, on Up Deck's contributions.
Mm-hmm. We can definitely do a, a banner in this year, coming soon, the Up Deck Outdoor Learning Pavilion.
Yep, I think that would be great. I love that idea. When cheap in the price.
Doing something a little higher profile certainly strikes me as a good thing. I, I had also been imagining that it would, could be nice to have someplace where you could just. Put names of the Up Deck members on them as, uh, and rather than handing people a plaque when they go off of Up Deck.
Oh, what a great idea, Michael. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's a great idea, but then stop and do the math. Um, fifty years of five people a year.
We can each have. We have a few, we have a few names on a.
Yeah, and we're.
Fifty names, yeah, right off the bing bong. Uh, so, um, I, I don't know how practical that would be.
Well, there is, there is, Up Deck members, uh, rolling off. Um, do you have, uh, an opportunity for a, uh, tree, a tree to be planted? When they go off of the, um, when they end their service.
Sure beats a plaque any day in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely. There, there are a lot of plaques that probably end up, uh, in the landfill.
Will be after us, no doubt, but I don't actually care.
So I was just going to say, sort of to link it back to what the foundation was saying. I think, I think that we need high visibility in this and this is an opportunity to celebrate when there hasn't been a lot of opportunities to celebrate.
Well, and that, that was, uh, we were initially thinking we were going to try to do something in, in June. And, uh, you know, that became kind of un, unrealistic, I think. Um, but we thought August would be great just because that is the first, the first Up Deck meeting for the new class.
Yep.
Um, and it's already sort of a social, more of a social type.
Right, yeah.
So we thought it'd be nice to kind of tie the two together, um, and, uh, and. You know, just to have, have the old, old class, new class, get to meet and share stories and, um, enjoy C L P.
I do know that, like, the, the, the timing, that kind of that we're talking about, it would be. Past the point at which we kind of get new people, right? But there's some degree of like, using, you know, a dedication, uh, as a sort of recruitment tool for the future. In terms of just like talking about it.
Well, and we do, I mean, we recruit, you know, we'll accept applications year-round for Up Deck. So, so if an interested person wanted to submit an application, you know, we would, we would certainly take it at that point. And, um, and, you know, depending on, uh. You know, because people's circumstances change. Sometimes people will, you know, have to, have to end their service early. And, um, you know, then that person might be available to be appointed. Um, you know, then that person might be available to be appointed um to fill out, you know, someone else's term as well, so. Yeah, I think I think that's a great idea too, and we do, we do get, um, you know, uh. Family participation as well with our uh Up Deck members where, you know, one spouse will have served and then the other spouse. You know, decides to serve too, so definitely a good opportunity.
I think probably as important as anything will be how much publicity we can generate with. With whatever we're planning to do, if it's if it's to to dedicate that space. However, we do it, I think we need to make sure that the community knows about it, and then on an ongoing thing, I think. Meredith is right to have something in the in the facility that explains what Up Deck is, cause. That's gonna be the first question people are gonna ask is what the hell is an Up Deck, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's something we might put into the and ask the architects about if they can think of a way that that it could be incorporated into the into the building. And I don't, I was, I was just thinking that we had a a guest a couple of years ago whose mother's. It was one of the first women of the a bronze tablet at the U of I. And he was real anxious to go and see his mom's name up on that. In fact, I think he was really pretty teary when he's. When he saw that up there, and I think that, I mean, we're obviously not getting into a bronze tablet kind of, but but something like that, I mean, to see. You know, to go back years later and 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 see a a family member's name up on that and that they had actually contributed in a big way to the. To the greatness of the Park District is is a is a really meaningful thing and. Better than a a plaque that Michael's right would end up. Maybe in the landfill.
Yeah, and and I was just cha- double checking the website, the 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 Up Tech pages. I mean, just, I just looked at it, so I did not dig deep, right? It's this very surface level about like. Practical matters, what is up to and how to apply. I think there's an opportunity here to build all, to think about building a more of a historical archive and. Like showcasing and and I I think it's important to tell the story of where, things that you love about the Park District and. Where those in- of Up Deck um have built that, you know, for, I mean. And so just highlighting some more of that and, um, I mean, that's not a small undertaking, having an intern to help with something. But I but I think it's an opportunity, right, for us to think of, tell that story.
Yes.
Right, and it's and and it's a powerful story if you really think about it, I mean, the the Nature Center. Completely grew out of uh Up Deck involvement, so and there are, I I'm pretty sure other examples that we can come up with.
Um, I would say that you belong here came out of Up Deck involvement, really, in this most basic form.
Well, I know that that Up Deck came into existence four years after the Park District. Purchased the land that would become Meadowbrook and they had an enormous role to play. All the way, all the way through that.
Oh, really?
Oh, absolutely. They had a Meadowbrook, they had a Meadowbrook Subcommittee um for a number of years that um. That really took a lead role in in developing um and helping to develop Meadowbrook Park. And I and I think that's been the case in in a lot of stuff. If if we did get an intern who 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 had that kind of bent, I I think it would be really interesting. Uh, I I I doubt that there is any park that has not been touched in some way. By by Up Deck or or probably most programs.
Yeah, that's right. You know, Robin would be a good resource. We we need to.
Yep.
But he needs to talk to him and have him tape, you know, ask him some questions and record his. His responses and his remembrances of of Up Deck, because I'm as, I'm assuming that was Robin's idea in the first place, wasn't it?
Actually, it was a board member.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
It was a.
Run of the show then?
It was a board member who said if the school dis- we had just lost a referendum. And um, and everybody was saying, you you didn't do a good job of presenting your case. And what can we do? How can we present our case better? And one of the board members said in the discussion, well, the school board. I think it was Robin that told me this. Um, the school board uh has a has has an advisory committee, why don't we? Yes, Robin is the one that told me that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so he'll be the person to.
Yep.
Tack down for some, yeah. I think actually we just made a lot of.
No, I think it's good though, because I, you you know, um. I think it's good to have a little little direction from from the full board. Just because of the process, you know, never really got to kind of play out along the way it might have traditionally gone. You know, just with with Covid and with um, you know, staff transition and things like that. You you know, I think I think uh, the direction is appreciated, so I I think. These are all great suggestions and I think, I think we're still in a good place to be able to move forward um with with doing something in August. And then, uh, you know, another great thing to do would be after the the pavilion itself is actually built and we have a. Grand opening, you know, make sure we're inviting all that same group back to see the finished product and and, uh, you know.
All right, I I have another another thought here. I'm wondering if, uh, cause I know we have a a large Up Deck alumni list. If that we set something up so that maybe on an annual basis or on a twice a year basis, we. Someone summarized what Up Deck had been doing. And then the alumni could um opt in or out of getting an email letting them know what Up Deck. Was still was was doing. Because, uh, and it, it doesn't have, I mean, I think, once you've been on Up Deck, you have, you see the parks in a whole different way. And I think you don't lose your interest in the parks, even if you go to Cleveland or something.
Right.
But I I think that would be a good way of of keeping that base a little more securely attached to the Urbana Park District. And, you know, and then people can opt in or out so that it's 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 not an onerous thing if they.
Yeah, yeah, we could probably do like a a mail chimp or like a newsletter or letter or something where.
Yeah.
You know, people can can unsubscribe if they don't want to hear, but.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think it would take a whole lot of work to put something together. Send out twice a year. Anyway, that's, that's part of the.
I'll just add, and this may already be in the works, like, to me, this is also, again, we're a social media campaign of celebrating fifty years of Up Deck with. Sending out, you know, breadcrumbs on a regular, highlighting stories. It's great, you know.
Is breadcrumbs a technical term?
You know.
Yes. So I was just checking to see if it was.
Yeah, I mean, it's my turn. You gotta lead people along, so.
Yeah, oh, oh, I see, similar to Hansel and Gretel style, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Nancy, one one po- another positive to the uh annual report, let's, I'll just call it that.
Sure.
You sh- whole lot easier in the next fifty years tracking what Up Deck did without. Finding a Roger Diggs that would dig through, you know, fifty years and more of media, you know.
That is true.
So at least it'd be at literally our fingertips and.
Yeah, yeah.
We could could probably do an annual report. I think that's probably the best way to keep them informed.
Right, right.
Okay, well, a a whole lot of ideas out there, I I think that there's. Plenty of a basis to move forward at this point.
So.
What do we do about the resolution?
I was just gonna ask that.
Our thought was certainly it could be, you know, tabled, we can come back. Or, again, that was an example of kind of a, I don't want to say a minimal approach, but as Kelsey said, more of an official. Document that's similar to our other, you know, resolution.
Well, and I think this is sort of like a little bit, kind of like what Meredith was talking about breadcrumbs, because what I, what I had envisioned. Was. Having Mark, like when the board is ready to take action on on a, you know, official resolution or something. Honoring Up Deck. One, reaching out to current former Up Deck and saying, hey, guess what? This is what the board is doing at tonight's meeting, if you want to come see. Um, but also, you know, reaching out to media and having Mark run some stories about it. Prior to the meeting, um, to kind of just get it out there a little bit. And then I I had imagined that this would be done in advance of. Um, you know, a planned Up Deck Celebration, where then also at at the meeting, you know, the board could talk about. The the celebratory event that would happen in August.
Yeah, I think the resolution, I mean, in 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 our in our Covid situation, that the resolution is only kind of a. Passing piece of paper, I mean, and you can't really do.
Yeah, I thought it was important for the record to.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, right, right.
You know, if someone like Roger wants to come through in fifty fifty years from now and look and see that we did that and that the board, you know, discussed. At length, the the many contributions of Up Deck and that it's in the historical record, so that was the other reason for wanting to make sure that we did that as well.
I I I also think that makes kind of a bookend because Up Deck was was um formed via a resolution. And fifty years later, we recognize it with resolution.
Yep.
You know, the things.
Just another comparison for our hundredth anniversary of the Park District. We didn't have a celebration on the anniversary, but we had a resolution that marked that occasion. The actual event and celebration was months later in October.
Yep.
So I think the concept would be, you know, just doing something really significant. And ideally, you can capture that in in the same year.
Is there any reason why we should delay passing this? I mean.
We have to take the Northwoods out of it.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, if we want to change the language to reflect other.
So, does this make sense to do? Are we doing this in July or as August, like, in, because. It would be two week, right, the Up Deck meeting is the fourth Friday, fourth Friday.
Yeah. That's our kickoff kind of new Up Deck, our kickoff event.
So, I I think it really does, so the kind of the reason um why we initially thought maybe the May Board Meeting was because. Up Deck was formed by a resolution at the May Board Meeting fifty years ago. Um, but, you know, we could bring it back for June, we could bring it back for July. You know, June, Up Deck's first meeting was in June fifty years ago, so that's of significance, but. You know, I I I think the idea was just to. Um, make sure that we're we're now sort of officially. Via board mechanism, you know, honoring the um honoring the the significance of the anniversary. So I I would imagine I can rework it and bring it back in June if that's, if the board is is. Uh, open to that, otherwise, we can, we can certainly bring it back at a later meeting as well or or do it in August, I mean.
But why can't we do it tonight and just amend the, can we, can we just amend the the, you know, taking out the Northwoods reference? And just pass it that way? I mean, does it make that much difference? Could we do that?
I think, yeah, I mean, we, well, I, we, we. I don't know if we should, just because the agenda just said it was a discussion item, and so I think if it's gonna be an action item, we probably should have worded it as such on the agenda.
Oh, all right, okay.
So we can, well, but I can then clean it up and bring it back, we can bring it back for June and that way. I'll also invite Up Deck to come. See you guys do that too, if they are interested, they might not be, but if they are. Cause I I was kind of hoping we might get.
That's my question, Kelsey. I don't think it's very, if we're gonna, my, if we're asking people to participate, I feel like there should be something more than. Just the passage of the resolution.
Well, I.
If the board needs to prepare something, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, yeah, I, yeah, cause I had imagined, I mean, you guys are so good at just speaking on the importance of Up Deck anyway, I. I didn't really think that you, you know, um, but I I just sort of imagined it 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 wouldn't be. You know, necessarily uh a a big to do, but just, you know, it it means something to hear the board. Say, you know, on television and to the public, you know, what what important contributions Up Deck has made over the last fifty years. Um, and, you know, just be able to to speak on that a little bit, and you guys do it so well.
Well.
But I I I would, I would ask maybe too that we we could say, and in August, we're gonna, we're going to have a. A celebratory event where we can all gather together and, um, so I can, I can provide you with that information.
Well, how about if we reverse it? How about if? Uh, board members who are interested make a cameo appearance at the Up Deck meeting. In May, that'll still be in May, and we can say, you know, we're here to thank you for your services and we, in in June, we're going to be. Uh, passing a resolution, um, so that it's official. Showing the 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 community how much we've relied, it's, you know, whatever, whatever people want to say. But that way, we can, we can, board members can go to Up Deck rather than than vice versa. You know, it's just once, we can, it could be the first thing on the agenda, we could, we could run that through really fast.
Right, uh, the, the only thing, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Nancy.
No, go ahead.
Um, well, the, and this was a, this was an idea born out of the committee, like the little group that we have kind of working on it. But we, it was suggested that we invite former Up Deck as well, so. Although I guess we could invite former Up Deck to the Up Deck meeting.
Well, of course, most of the board is former Up Deck anyways, so.
Right, right.
Invite it anyway.
Um, but no, I I mean, we have a whole database of people and it's just sort of, uh. You know, the idea was kind of sending out, a- as far as inviting former Up Deck to the board meeting. It was sort of step one of a kind of save the day, we're having the celebration in August and also the board will be honoring, you know. Up Deck's service uh at a board meeting. And and saying, you know, feel free to come. You know, see it i- if you'd like and speak on your experiences at Up Deck, so a chance for former Up Deck to also address the board.
So I think we can all of those things, right?
I think so.
I mean, I think they're mutually exclusive, I think, nice to make the announcement in the in the Up Deck meeting, there you have a captive audience. Considering our public input, our public participation i- is, you know, and if there's a space on a on a meeting agenda. As part of this on a board meeting, and if fo- folks do want to attend, we can also provide that space.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, we we can definitely do both, yeah, for sure. So, and then my question to you guys about the resolution is, were. We wanting to make any other changes other than substituting. North Woods with the outdoor learning pavilion.
Well, I have a bee in my in my bonnet about, I'd I'd like the resolution to be written in plain English instead of.
Okay, so whereas?
Exactly, I mean, I mean, come on, this is, this is for the public, it it doesn't need to be in that sort of a context, and I think we can just. Put in pretty plain English, that the the good feelings that we as a board have for all that Up Deck has done. And and our desire to honor them without. Going wild with that, and and I'm, I certainly volunteer to help edit such a thing, I think better. Not to just do all the wordsmithing here in a, in a full board meeting.
Yeah, right, that's a good idea.
All right, well, I can certainly, um, you know, take a, take a stab at it and then send it out, you know, for for additional eyes.
But but truly, there there's nothing in the law that requires a revolution to be worded the kind of way that they typically are.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you kind of fall into resolution mode and you just go with it, yeah.
And it's, it's partially how how lawyers make themselves stand out as a, uh, uh, you know, you gotta have. Them to do.
Job security.
Okay, so, uh, I I think we've got this pretty plain here, we're gonna rework the resolution, try to have something available come June. And and it sounds to me like the board is pretty fully on the the. Quite creative idea of 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 that. And we can't call it the Northwoods Pavilion, but it's the either the northerner Pavilion. So any other discussion on that? I think we've covered it pretty completely. Then we're ready for item C, which is action to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero four, adopting a qualifications based. Selection policy.
I didn't know if Derek or Katie was speaking to this, we spoke at the Policy Committee. No, if Derek or Katie was speaking to this, we spoke at the policy committee and basically have some limited language we need to update our policy on that relates to I dot.
I was hoping Derek would take a shot at it.
It's kind of a, it's a bidding related thing. So by default, Derek will turn to you.
Sure. Yeah. So, so as we discussed uh, last month and previously with the policy committee, uh, this is a requirement for us to adopt uh, a qualifications-based selection policy uh, for engineering services, professional services for work relating to I dot, or in our case, ITAP grant projects that are uh, using federal funds. And so we uh, used two examples by other agencies. They were remarkably similar. Uh, and they were also remarkably similar to the Bureau of Local Roads and Streets Manual language uh, to develop around. And so um, that's what's before you this evening. We would recommend that you move forward with adopting uh, the, this policy. And uh, as, as uh, Katie and, and Kelsey have noted in their recommendation, it would be reflected in chapter five of um, of our board policy manual. Uh, and then I guess it actually is housed in chapter seven. Is that right, Katie?
That's right. Yeah. Chapter seven is where we house standalone policies. And since it in itself is kind of like a multiple page standalone policy, it'll be in chapter seven. But we did put in chapter five, like a reference to it, which chapter five is our financial section of the board policy manual. So it makes sense that it's there, but since it's a longer policy, we put the, the full thing in chapter seven.
I'll mention two other quick things. Uh, when we reviewed it with the, the policy committee, uh, there was some question about how the actual scoring takes place. And we, we, we made that more clear uh, by actually calling out the points in our example uh, scoring sheet here within the policy. Um, so it should be pretty clear how, how we would uh, spread those points out and as we evaluate the, the firms that, that submit their qualifications. And then uh, appreciation to Michael for his close read. We made two, two uh, edits uh, within natural language, uh, switching criteria to criteria on and approved to approval. And those, those are even updated uh, there.
So you ready for the motion?
Yes.
All right. So I move that we approve ordinance 2021 dash zero four, adopting a qualifications-based selection policy.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, then we should do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Hi.
Roger?
I'm sorry. I.
Uh, Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That carries unanimously with all five commissioners' votes. So we now are I dot qualified.
Hoping for good news on the ITAP. Uh, we thought we'd hear something already.
Maybe this will put us over the top.
Let's hope.
Well, we could, we could use that new bridge. So now moves us to item D, action to approve a lease agreement with the Champagne County for the use of Brookins Pod 400.
Uh, I think you'll all find that we've got a draft lease. Um, there are really two documents included tonight, the draft, uh, the lease. And then there's a memorandum of understanding that relates to the athletic fields. As you recall from our previous reporting, um, we needed to get a new lease for the use of the Brookins Gym and for the outdoor fields. As we know, we're more than likely to be constructing our new facility. When we met with the county staff, we talked about separating out the fields. So that's the reason that it was not included in the lease agreement. We thought the MOU approach would give reasonable uh, a, authority and use of that document. We've had a couple of trickle-in comments from Matt Deering. And we weren't able to reach out to the county staff. Dana Brenner on their staff is out for a couple of weeks. And we could not contact Darlene. So we weren't able to modify this document. So I think our options tonight, in addition to answering any questions or going through the, the lease, would be that we could either authorize the directors and the legal to fix those and um, bring it forward to Michael for a signature, or we could simply postpone it and put it on the agenda next month. We apologize, the county wasn't very responsive, kind of got us into a very tight corner. And we weren't able to access the staff that could actually update or comment on it. So we don't have a complete copy tonight. Again, we could discuss it, or it could be, you know, remedied and fixed, or we simply could bring it back and uh, look at it with a clean copy.
Is there any problem with bringing it back?
There is not.
Terms of time, in terms of.
Yeah, I looked over our existing lease today briefly. The um, existing lease does expire on May 31st. Um, which is really why we've been pushing the county to get this in place. Um, but it also has a clause that says that if we're still occupying the premises at the end of the lease, that it just turns to a month-to-month lease. So it's not like we're kicked out or something. So, you know. I'll, basically all of the terms of the lease stay intact. It's just, you know, we, we just really want a new one. But I, I just, to me, I would prefer and recommend that the board table it until next month so that we have more time to work out those fine details instead of rush something through. And you know, apparently they just need more time. And we always want to make sure to take our attorney's recommendations, so.
Yeah, I think that, that would be my suggestion was to table it.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And again, I would just say in general, the, well, incomplete, the terms are gonna be the same. It's just more making sure everything's in place.
Sure.
Katie and Tim, I don't know if this was one of Matt's notes, but it looks like the, the lots A and B are flipped in the lease and in the MOU.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was one of the comments.
That was one, right.
Yeah, and we're missing uh.
I think there's an exhibit.
East mezzanine for an exhibit.
I'll make sure of that though, Derek, just in case, since we're gonna.
Well, shall I move then that we table action on the lease agreement with the Champagne County for the use of the Brookins Pod 400?
That would be the staff recommendation.
I have. I've made that motion. Oh, I heard a second. Is that what I?
Yeah. And I think, I think actually to table something, that's all that's required is for there to be a motion and a second on it to, to.
Oh, we don't need to vote. Well, who, I mean, does, voting's not that hard, isn't it?
Yeah, right. So.
Thank you.
Okay. And um, and the next time around, when we are voting on this, it's, it's actually two separate documents. The memorandum of understanding and, and the lease. I think we should actually have two action items when we approve those. It'd just be a little cleaner, I think.
Michael would, uh, the current was the signatures of the direct executives. Would you prefer that to be the presidents of the boards and do formal action on that?
Yeah, I think we were, I think we were confused, Michael, because the MOU doesn't have any financial obligation. It's basically just a memorandum of understanding that, you know, we'll use the fields and we'll mow the fields, you know.
Trading services. But we can do it however you prefer. We just thought since it didn't have a financial component, we could deal with it in that way. But we're open.
Well, uh, I, I think the board needs to be aware of it. So maybe, but maybe we don't actually have to necessarily approve it. But it, it does have financial stuff in it in the sense that we're agreeing to do services and they're agreeing to let us use the property. I mean.
Right.
That, that is a financial arrangement. It just isn't specifying how much we have to spend in order to uh, shovel the snow and mow the grass.
We could word the, we could just word the motion to say, you know, the board, you know, we move that the executive director can, can, you know, initiate this agreement or something.
And that's the MOU.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think separating them out is, is a better, is a better way to do it. I think it's, it's, it's just a cleaner, I think, is a.
Well, and again, we were thinking when we exit Brookins, we certainly want to document, you know, that we don't need to go back and modify for the other. So that, that was at least the, the concept.
Absolutely. And, and approving it separately from the lease, I think, helps clarify that.
Okay, thanks. That gives us clear direction.
And the MOU, while it is uh, set up for five years, we will review it annually.
Yeah.
I assume there's some type of, will be some type of like, you can, either party can terminate within 60 days. That's usually how.
What's that? Is, is it 120 days?
60 days, I think, is normal.
Oh, is it 60? I think it's 120.
We're hoping we can, we can extend it earlier than uh, you know, one thing we were trying to be cautious of is we don't get to the fifth year and then they say, oh, well, this is gonna be over with. Um, especially for the land, because we want to make sure we have plenty of notice on that. So we're hoping, you know, maybe year three, you extended another couple of years. Just keep, keep it growing until we have something else in place that would be uh, more solid for the Park District.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to put up new fields in a year's time.
Yeah.
Right.
No kidding.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, there was no new business removed from the consent agenda. So that brings us to uh, Roman numeral eight, comments from Commissioner.
I just had one quick comment. I just wanted to thank everyone for welcoming me. And um, you know, I, I, I've got a lot to learn and I've got big shoes to fill. But I, I really look forward to working with everybody and uh, you know, continuing to make the Park District great.
Oh, we're really glad, glad that you, that you were willing to, to, to run. It's, um, it's a, you know, six years is a lo- is a long commitment. But I, I think that you'll enjoy it. I don't, I don't think we've ever had anybody quit because they hated it. So. And we're relatively congenial bunches. It's, it's rare that we have votes that are anything but five to zero.
And at the same time, I hope you've noticed, um, we, it's not so much disagreement, but we bring our ideas out, talk about them and try to come to a synthesis that is better than any single one of us would come up with. So it's, it's an important process and we're eager to have you participating in it.
Yeah, and it's nice to have a young complement to the three fogies on the other end.
You brought our average age down. We appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. The two of you really have done us a big favor.
But it's, you know, it, it's paid back in, in kind because I, I attribute a lot of the way that I work in my professional life to what I learned, I, what I have learned from the Urbana Park District.
Is that right?
Yeah, in terms of building consensus and, and, you know, you've all been doing human-centered design before it was fashionable, right? Like, that's just always been the approach, um, looking at people and places and how everything intersects. And so, um, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, that's wonderful to hear. Really glad to hear you say that.
With a younger member, does that mean we can keep the meetings going till 11:00 PM?
I'm gonna be asleep over here.
I'll take that as a no.
Some of, some of those people have to work.
I used to work at the nature center when the meetings did go to 11:00.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but we started a little later then too, so.
A half hour, Michael.
Yeah. Any other? Any other commissioner comments? Well, hearing none, I think we have completed our agenda. And so I will be happy to declare us adjourned and look forward to seeing you next month.